Okay, do we need to avoid necessaries unless approved by provider? Is B correct? Yes, B is correct and especially it is indicating unless approved by a provider like even if patient is having they can have that one with approval of provider okay in some cases we need to because necessaries what necessaries do yeah contains sodiums also and um this reduce the excretion through renal okay and that's why we don't want increase level of lithium in body lithium toxicity okay expect fine hand tremors initially is it possible to have? C is yes, yes, what kind of tremors will indicate the lithium toxicity? Thank you Keanu keep guys keep double tapping and sharing with your friend what kind of tremors we are looking in lithium toxicity? Anyone? Okay, fine tremors are expected, okay? Fine tremors are expected so we don't need to worry about that one these are just common these are common but if we are having course um tremors that gonna be the problem, okay? That means we are having toxicity in body too much lithium is accumulated take on an empty stomach to increase absorption do we need to, does it have any relationship with that? No, yes queen actually we need to take it with food okay because lithium can cause GI upset lithium can cause GI upset so food does not affect its absorption alrighty, report polyuria and polydipsia what lithium can cause? Yes, report, yes because lithium is the one of the medication that can cause medication induced diabetes okay diabetes insipidus in this scenario so patient will lose too much water and too much glucose there okay and that's why they will have increased thirst and urination alrighty, let's move to question number two we have fifty in this one also and hopefully we will do at least twenty-five okay vancomycin hi Samir, okay the nurse is gearing for a patient on vancomycin IV which finding require intervention select all that apply do we need to worry about red flushing on neck and chest? we discuss this one John yes, what kind of syndrome is happening in vancomycin? red man syndrome yes red man syndrome because when we are rapidly infusing vancomycin it is causing lot of histamine release okay and that is causing red flushing of neck and chest so we need to reduce we need to slow down we need to slow down the infusion, okay tinnitus and hearing loss? yes, auto toxicity yes definitely we done that one to auto toxicity it is the potential and serious side effect of vancomycin okay nephrotoxicity, auto toxicity, red man syndrome these are main main side effects peak level drawn after dose, is it correct? do we need to do that? is C correct? guys keep sharing and double tapping what are the two levels that we need to take for medication? you want to say yes? what are the two levels, yeah, thank you Rory, thank you Doreen, okay so with vancomycin we don't need to we don't need to take the peak level, okay, we need to take the throw level before next dose just to make sure we will not, we will not um make it like you know toxic, okay? so with vancomycin we don't need to take the it's not a routine to take the peak level okay serum creatinine rising to two point O mg per deciliter yes, yes definitely because likewise I already said when we were discussing auto toxicity vancomycin can cause nephrotoxicity also, okay? and what is normal level of creatinine? yes kidneys, yes definitely I know in NCLX they give us normal levels but it's always good to remember zero point six two one point two, okay? this, yeah, is it zero point nine? maybe I need to double check then um okay, 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 I thought maybe I made the mistake okay serum creatinine rising two point O so two point O is like seriously higher than normal range one point two, okay? so that's why it is it require intervention that means we need to work on that right now okay so definitely we will check serum creatinine infusion completed over thirty minute we already discussed that, is it correct? no, how long we need to take? is thirty minute too fast or too slow or appropriate? too quick, yes it is too quick so it definitely gonna require intervention, okay because if we are giving too fast what can happen? an hour, yes, at least an hour, what can happen if we are giving it too fast? red man's, yeah, okay, yeah okay, so only peak level was wrong answer, rest every one everything require the intervention cool guys, good one okay, next one we are gonna do finetone, what kind of medication is finetone? guys keep double tapping the screen and this is a anti-conversion, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah so finetone block the sodium channels in the brain that's how it work, okay just maintaining the neuron membrane, okay, okay, ask about side effect a patient prescribe finetone ask about side effect which should the nurse indicate in teaching? gingival hyperplasia is option A correct just give me second guys, I am getting call okay guys, sorry for disturbance, okay a patient with finetone gingival hyperplasia was causing gingival hyperplasia we discussed that John, we discussed that what caused gingival hyperplasia, I think yesterday or day before yesterday finetone acton anyone remember gum overgrowth, yes because there is fibroblast that it is not um understood properly but they said research said fibroblast increase cause increase in collagen production and that's why we have yeah, that's why we have gingival hyperplasia, thank you Dorian or it depends, options can be anything, Nanya okay sedation and ataxia, can it be there? is option B correct? yes, because we need to understand how it work, okay? we already talk about like finetone act on the sodium channels, yes in brain it block the sodium channels, it block the sodium channel so whatever happening in the neuron rapid firing in the neuron it stop it relax them down and that's how it reduce the seizure, so sedation CNS depression, okay central nervous system depression this cause and that's why we have ataxia, that's why we have sedation alrighty, next one when, when there is too much medication like finetone and too much slowdown of neuron that, that time you guys will see ataxia, otherwise sedation is very common symptom in this one fetal abnormalities in pregnancy is it a tetra-teratogen? yes yes, finetone is teratogen so definitely C is gonna be there so we can't give it, okay? and uh because it affects sodium, it affects sodium so that's why it is known to affect the folate metabolism, yes, this Shabi neural tube defect because it affect folate metabolism that's why baby comes with neural tube defects alrighty yeah risk of agranulosclerosis is D correct? yes, D is correct, D is correct, I really don't know the proper way how it cause agranulosclerosis but this medication does cause it, okay? yeah, can it cause hypertensive crisis? I will, I will make sure I will check the agranulosclerosis after that no, yes, option E guys, option E okay what is hypertensive crisis, what is hypertensive crisis guys? high BP, yes rebounding high BP, okay, so this medication is not for the hype, yeah, yeah so this medication is not for hypertension so this medication is not gonna cause hypertensive crisis, okay? it is anti-epileptic, so we will not see hypertensive crisis in that we usually see that one in medication that does affect the blood pressure directly and when you guys stop those medication then hypertensive crisis happen okay question number four in nurse review medication for a patient taking warfarin which concurrent drug increase bleeding risk select all that apply, so we need to select multiple medication right now, okay? aspirin known to be there, do that yeah everyone, no issue with aspirin, hi C2King yeah, so aspirin definitely because that is also antiplatelet agent and combining with warfarin is gonna increase the risk and that's why we always check with patient if patient is having aspirin okay, is temofen B? what about B, no? yeah, so B is not correct, okay, yeah what about C? amiodarone C is correct? or not? thank you guys for following, please keep double tapping the screen and share with your friend, just let me, C is correct, C is correct anyone know why we need to watch this medication with warfarin, why we need to watch amiodarone? so amiodarone inhibits CYP enzymes, okay? yes, 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 yes no B and G so it is CYP enzyme inhibitor, okay and we need those one to metabolize warfarin okay so if you don't have enough CYPs in body then you can't metabolize warfarin warfarin gonna stay in body for long time, okay and that's why amiodarone can increase the bleeding risk, okay even not directly but it will make more presence of warfarin in body yeah, and it can lead to toxic level and it can increase the risk of bleeding so we gonna say yes to that one rifampin D yes, yes, this one is inducer, this one is inducer, no B and G so rifampin is inducer, okay? rifampin is reduce inducer of CYP enzyme so if patient is taking rifampin the warfarin will metabolize fastly, okay? so one is inhibitor, one is inducer, inducer means now there is too much CYP in body, okay? yeah, so if patient is having um rifampin and taking the warfarin we need to we need to, we need to worry about uh like anticoagulant effect we need to adjust the dose accordingly okay so make sure because body in the body is not gonna stay for long time, okay finetone finetone okay guys, this is the one of the medication that is very complicated while giving with warfarin, okay? yes, even though likewise no B and G said finetone is inducer, finetone is inducer at initial stage finetone always reduce the increase the metabolism of warfarin but later on what's gonna happen? initially it's reducing the warfarin level and effectiveness but then later on is gonna increase the availability of warfarin on body by displacing warfarin from protein binding sites, because what's happening, this medication is want to metabolize all the warfarin, okay? and now initially it reduced there is not much warfarin present in bloodstream now it need to get warfarin that is working, okay? so what it will go, it will go to the protein binding site and it will grab the warfarin that is attached there and make sure it start traveling into the bloodstream that's why finetone is complicated one, okay so always watch for finetone also so it can do both effect, it can do both effect okay and it's not sure like it will happen in every person like I am saying it's complete, yeah likewise I said it's complicated with finetone, yeah but this medication is complex guys when we are giving it for friends so we just need to watch it closely where INR we need to watch closely whether um it's stable or not alrighty, thank you guys for double tapping, thank you okay spirulacton, what kind of medication is spirulacton guys? potassium sparing, yes, definitely potassium sparing diuretic we got here do we need to monitor patient for hyperkalemia then? do we need to monitor patient for hyperkalemia? yes, yes, because we are saying it's potassium sparing medication we saying it is potassium sparing medication so that's why when body is excreting you know like too much water and alongside sodium is also getting excreted it does not excrete potassium, okay does not excrete potassium so that's why we need to be worried about that okay because it can increase the level of potassium in body okay, what is the normal level of potassium in body? what is normal level, thank you no B and G, what is normal level of potassium in body? three point five to five, yeah, cool, okay restrict food rich in potassium, do we need to restrict the food? yes, because patient is already on risk of hyperkalemia because this medication is potassium sparing so we need to restrict food that is rich in potassium definitely we gonna do that, avoid juice in patient with renal failure what's happening if patient is having renal failure? what's happening if patient is having renal failure, toxicity? nephron not functioning, yes queen, so nephron not functioning the body's ability to excrete potassium and other electrolytes reduced so that's why this medication we need to avoid, okay otherwise what can happen potassium can go further high, okay? alrighty, do we need to expect gynecomastia in male patient? yes, yes, this is the one of the medication that known to have anti-adenogenic effect like okay it block the effect of male hormones alrighty and that's why it cause enlarged breast in male patients okay administer potassium supplement routinely what about E guys, do we need to give potassium supplement to patient? no, because we all talking about avoiding potassium and this medication gonna create high potassium in body, what can happen if we have high potassium in our body? what can happen guys? upper natremia overload to heart construction, yes arrhythmias definitely, yeah so that's how we need to worry about that one, we can't, we can't um give too much potassium to patient, okay, next medication isoniazide, INH guys for tuberculosis should a patient taking isoniazide for tuberculosis should be taught which precautions, let's all that apply, do we need to avoid alcohol? yes, because this is the one of a medication that known to cause liver damage okay hepatotoxicity, okay this is one of the side effect and if we are combining it with alcohol hepatotoxicity chances are gonna increase, okay so that's why we need to avoid alcohol okay, report numbness or tingling in extremities report numbness and tingling in extremities, yes, this is very common side effect, this is very common side effect, okay? yeah, because what it is similar to, what this medication similar to? anyone? okay isoniazide is very similar to vitamin B six okay, it is very similar to vitamin B six okay and when it work as a paradoxine antagonist then it create the deficiency of vitamin B six, we done in last document also it create the deficiency of vitamin B six and that will cause the numbness and tingling in extremities, okay peripheral neuropathy this is the only reason, because we need vitamin B six for what? nerve functions, yes we need vitamin B six for nerve function now this medicine is similar body doesn't want too much B six, that's why Now this medicine is similar, body doesn't want too much B six, that's why we have lack of B six. And we can't perform enough, body can't perform enough nerve function. That's why there will be numbness, that's why there will be tingling. Okay, now we already answered that one, do we need to take with vitamin B six as prescribed? Do we need to take supplementation? Yes, definitely, because just to overcome that deficiency that is isoniazide creating. We need to take it, okay, we need to take the supplementation. Alrighty, use sunscreen to prevent photosensitivity. Thank you sunflower. Okay, is D yes or no? Yeah, so D is correct, D is correct guys, this is one of the medication because. It absorb the UV rays or known to absorb UV rays, exact mechanism not clear. But isoniazide is like kind of medication or even even though it's metabolites also. Absorb the UV rays, okay? So patient is more sensitive to sunscreen or sun rays, so that's why we need to use sunscreen. Alrighty, expect orange discoloration of body fluid. Is answer E correct? Okay, this medication does not cause orange discoloration with which other medication that we give for TV. Cause orange discoloration, I know this medication is for tuberculosis. But this is not the one, there is another medication. Yes, rim, reform might say, yeah, the one with R, just that's the Nicole, okay? Orange discoloration gonna come with R. Yeah, yes, that's actually, that's actually good uh mnemonic Nicole. So O R A N G, orange, one with R, okay, just remember one with R. That's actually good way to remember it, that's gonna cause. Orange discoloration, yeah. Okay, one with R. Yeah, you guys need to create your own mnemonic, okay, let's move to next one. Okay, which can you explain B again, okay? Report numbness or tingling in extremities, okay? Why we need C, okay, that's B and C is together sunflower, B and C is together. Function of vitamin B six is, we need vitamin B six for what? For the nerve function, okay, B six help with nerve function. And isoniazide is structurally very similar to B six, okay? When we have isoniazide, the body think there is enough B six and doesn't want anymore. Okay, and it interfere with metabolism of B six, so that's why. There is lack, there is lack of vitamin B six now in body when we are taking this medication. And that's why when we don't have enough B six, it impaired nerve function. And that's why you will have numbness or tingling in extremities, okay, and. Yeah, and that's what is peripheral neuropathy, okay, Alsmir that is peripheral neuropathy. When nerve functions can't, yeah, that is peripheral neuropathy. The nerve function is not going on, okay, that's what I am explaining right now. So then you need vitamin B six as a supplement, so to make sure those nerve functions. Can go properly. Okay, so this is the only reason. But I like this one with R, I will also never forget that one now for my entire life. Hopefully. So which assessment are priority for a patient receiving morphin IV, select all that apply. How does morphin work? How does morphin work guys? A B C, yes, slow the heart rate, okay, manage severe pain, yes. Which receptor take the pain signal? So it work on M, M for morphin, it work on mu receptor. Okay, M for morphin, yeah, yes Chevy, okay, it work on mu receptor, okay? And this one is, this is full agonist, this is full agonist of mu receptor. And block it in the central nervous system, that's why patient doesn't feel the pain, okay, yeah. That's why patient doesn't feel the pain and we know now because it is CNS depressant, it is agonist. What we gonna happen, do we need to worry about respiratory rate? Yes, because it's CN depression, we need to, how much respiration we need before administering? Morphin, yes Chevy, it can decrease respiratory time. Twelve to twenty, yes, don't administer if it is less than twelve, pain level. Why we need to assess the pain level? Yes, why we need to assess the pain level guys? To know the dose to give, yes, and to know whether it's going to be effective or not, some people, yeah, yeah. Yes, yes, good one Nicole, okay, ball function, what it can cause? Constipation, yes, reduce the. Yeah. Pupillary response. What kind of pupils morphin cause, what kind of pupil morphin cause? Pinpoint, yes Chevy, so pinpoint, okay, so we definitely need to check the pupillary response, alrighty? Yeah, A B C D, because yeah, and do we need to worry about blood glucose? Does this have anything to do blood glucose? No, definitely no, we don't need to because it does not affect blood glucose, okay? Unless patient is having diabetes or something else, then make sure you guys check that into the vital signs also. But right now that's not the priority. Alrighty, okay, let's move to next one, question number eight. So a nurse teach a patient about dioxine therapy, which statement indicate correct understanding? Select all that apply, how does dioxine work? How does dioxine work guys? Heart pumping medication, yeah. Sodium potassium ATP pump, yes, yes, okay? It affect the cardiac muscle cell and contractability, nice, alrighty, yes. Okay, I will check my pulse before teaching, taking each dose. Do we need to check the pulse before taking each dose? Yes, how much we need, when we can, when we can give dioxine to patient? How much we need, what is lowest pulse? More than sixty, yes, yeah, if it is more than sixty, definitely we can give it to the patient, okay? I should report nausea and vision change. What about B guys? Yes, toxicity, toxicity, what kind of vision change we expect in dioxine? Hello's, green hello's, yes, okay? Green hello's, classical yellow green, yes Nicole, yellow spots, yellow green, yeah. I can take antacid at same time, is C correct? Thank you Musal for double typing. No, cause we discussed yesterday also, what antacid can cause? Antacid can reduce the absorption, yes, yes, yes definitely. So we can't take it, okay especially calcium, magnesium and aluminium. Calcium have more, more effect on that one, okay, so we can't take antacid. How many hours you need, if even if you need antacid, how many hours difference you need? We will take break on question number ten, okay, after doing, we will take two minute break. Two hours, yes, two to three hours will be enough, okay? My potassium level can affect this drug action. Can dioxine affect potassium level? Thank you guys for double tapping. Yes, because likewise, I just said how dioxine work, okay? It work on sodium potassium ATP pump, okay? It work on sodium potassium ATP pump, so sodium potassium. ATP is, and now what's happening? Potassium and dioxine is fighting with each other to attach to this pump, okay? So that's why we need to make sure we are watching it, okay? So really important to watch potassium level. If I miss a dose, I will double the next time, can patient double the dose of dioxine? No, definitely no, because dioxine have very narrow. Queen, I'm not, am I mute, no, I'm not mute, I did mute before, but not yet. Oh, I'll smear, sorry. All of these questions gonna be on, all of these questions me gonna be on YouTube also, so make sure you search nursing. And subscribe there, okay, I'm gonna post all the question on YouTube with rational with explanation. Okay, and the documents that I have question wise, they gonna be available to buy from our website soon, okay? Alrighty, if I miss a dose, I will be double the next time. Can we, it has very narrow therapeutic effect, very narrow therapeutic effect, so we can't double it. Okay, it's gonna cause toxicity guys, alrighty? Alrighty, let's move to question number nine and then it will be break time soon. A patient on fluxotene should be monitored for which findings, select all that apply, what is fluxotene guys? S S R I, yes, antidepressant, is S S R I guys, yeah, okay? With S S R I, do we need to worry about serotonin syndrome? Do we need to worry about serotonin syndrome, just definitely because excessive serotonin accumulation can cause it, okay? What are the symptoms of serotonin syndrome guys? What are the symptoms of serotonin syndrome? Anyone? Now we have too much serotonin in body, high fever, hypertension, hyperthermia. Hyperreflexia, hyper agitation, everything hyper, okay, everything hyper. Too much going into the neurons, okay? Okay, sexual dysfunction, can it cause? Can it affect sexual dysfunction? Expected, yes, so what happened because now we have too much serotonin in our body. And for sexual function, which which neurotransmitter is responsible for sexual function? Which neurotransmitter is responsible for sexual function guys, which one? Yes, yes Musal, dopamine, okay, so when you have too much serotonin in body. It also compete with dopamine and it does affect dopamine pathway, okay? And when it is affecting dopamine pathways, then. There is not enough dopamine to perform sexual function, okay, and that's why you have sexual dysfunction. Reducing the libido, reducing the, you know erectile dysfunction is there, yeah, okay? Hypnaturmia, do we need to worry about hypnaturmia? Hyponatremia, do we need to worry about hyponatremia? Anyone? Anyone thinking about C? No. Actually, yes, it can cause hyponatremia, one of the function of flukosateen to affect the ADH hormone, okay? It can stimulate the ADH, okay? It can increase ADH. And if you guys have known about S I A D H. Then you know. Okay. Syndrome of inappropriate ADH hormone. Okay, this happened because of flukosateen also. Okay, now we have too much ADH hormone. And what can happen? What is the function of ADH? What is function of ADH, guys? We have anti-diuretic hormone, too much in body, what can happen? Anyone? Regulate volume, too much fluid going up right now. Yes, too much sodium going out right now, excreting through urine. We have hyponatremia, definitely. We have hyponatremia, okay? Less fluid, less sodium. Yeah, orthostatic hypotension, can it cause orthostatic hypotension? No, yes, John, this medication doesn't cause orthostatic hypotension. Which class of, Musal, that, that, that is like, that's not gonna happenly unless it's very rare, okay? Yeah, hyponatremia is not the common. Okay, it can cause, it can cause, but it's not very common because we always give controlled drug of flukosateen. Like not too much high, unless patient is having toxicity, too much flukosateen, too much SSRI, too much serotonin, then that's gonna increase the ADH. Okay. Which kind of drugs can have orthostatic hypotension? What class of medication? In antidepressants. What class of antidepressant can cause orthostatic tricyclic? Yes, Musal, tricyclics. Definitely is one of the common medication class that can cause orthostatic hypotension. Okay, and include with that, uh, Mao is can also cause that. Okay, not, not every Mao is, but some of the Mao is. Uh, SSRI, not, not much common, insomnia, guys. Insomnia. Yes, why we will have that? Because it will increase the serotonin, okay? Now there is too much nervousness going on, too much agitation going on, there is too much information going in the brain. So that's why definitely we will see insomnia in patient. Righty, okay, let's move to our last question before break, then we will take two minute break. Just drink water break and then we will come back to another ten question. Which condition are contraindication for metformin therapy? Which conditions? Do we need to worry about renal impairment? Thank you, someone went to YouTube and subscribed, really appreciate. Just we need to worry, we need to worry about renal impairment, okay? Because we want metformin to be excreted, okay? If we have renal impairment, we already talked with other medications before that. It will start accumulating, it will start accumulating in the body, okay? So we definitely need that. Do we need to worry about liver disease? Yeah, D, yes, D can be the possible option, but we need to worry about is B. Okay. What is common side effect of metformin, guys? Can anyone please type it down? What is common side effect of metformin? And that's why I always say like always have a copy pen with you. Every time you will learn new thing. Hypoglycemia, GI effect. Yeah, what will happen when we have? Hypoglycemia also. Bloating, diarrhea, yes? Yes, yes, definitely. I'm still missing one thing that is very common in metformin. Thank you, we have ninety-two subscriber now. Thank you who is going to YouTube. Yeah, lactic acidosis, guys, lactic acidosis, okay? That is very common side effect of metformin. Okay. Everyone agree? With lactic acidosis. Yes, okay, so what happened? We need liver to metabolize lactate, alrighty? We need liver. To metabolize lactate. So what happened if you are giving metformin? Patient is at risk of lactic acidosis already because that is the common side effect. And if patient also have the liver disease. That is responsible to clear metformin or lactoid. It's gonna increase the risk of lactic acidosis, okay? So please have bit of research on that one. We need to worry about liver disease also. Okay. Heart failure. Requiring IV contrast. Why we don't give metformin when we are having heart failure? Yes, it's definitely just. What we usually see in IV contrast, what is usually present in IV contrast that interfere with? Metformin. Or other medication. Contrast. It is iodine, okay? Most of the IV contrast have iodine, yes Nicole, yes definitely. And when patient have iodine, it temporarily impair the renal functions. Okay, it temporarily impair the renal function. That's why you need to be worried about. Okay. So that's why we, we, even if somebody is having like bit of IV contrast, we need to make sure. Because otherwise, if renal functions are impaired, then too much accumulation of metformin gonna happen into the body. And then that's how we gonna have like more bleeding. Okay, type one diabetes with ketoacidosis. D, option D, guys. Option D. Yes. Okay, we need, we need, it is contraindicated, it is contraindicated, guys. Because what we just discussed here with liver disease. Lactic acidosis, okay? We discuss lactic acidosis here. So if somebody is having type one diabetes with ketoacidosis. Then lactic acidosis chances are gonna increase. Okay, those chances are way too high right now. Okay, so we need to find something else. Yes, well, yes. Okay, so we need to worry about that one. Hypertension. Hypertension. Is it contraindication for metformin? No, yeah, it is not, it is not. Okay, most of the people with diabetes also have the cardiovascular disease, you know? So sometime we need to manage it concurrently. Okay, so they can have multiple medication together.